Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Boyer Town Area School District. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Denon.
Ms. Duroff.
Here.
Mr. Foose.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
We all stand for a pledge allegiance and a moment of science. I have a note here that nobody previously signed up for public comment. Did anyone tonight sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you much. Okay, I'm asking for approval of minutes, approval of the October 26, 2021 Board of School Directors meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
No, please.
Ms. Duroff, and I did see Mr. Brophy's hand for a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to go to a presentation from Mr. Stout, class rank update discussion. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Board. I wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to have a little further discussion on Policy 214. I know there were some questions that had come up with our previous readings. We had our first reading, I believe, at the last board meeting, and the actual discussion on this, I believe, was a few weeks ago, might have been about a month ago. I have Dr. Foley with me if there's any specific questions, but we wanted to bring forth to you tonight a tweak in the policy prior to going for second reading at the November 23rd meeting. I'm not going to go through all the dynamics of the policy itself, but one of the significant changes and concerns that were brought up was the subtraction of the Val and Salutatorian conversations for, and I want to remind everyone, this is starting with the class of 2025. The current practice for the class of 2022, 2023, and 2024 will stay the same, the recommended changes for the class of 2025. So in one of the paragraphs that has the beginning with the class of 2025, we added this particular piece, which I will read out loud, "For the graduating class of 2025 and beyond, a student's numeric rank by grade point average will only be computed for the purposes of admission to higher education, valedictorian, salutatorian recognition, and/or the awarding of financial aid when required by the requesting institution." So by putting the Val and Sal back into the language, we still will have a recognition of those particular individuals. I talked to Dr. Foley about what that process will look like in 2025. It sounds a little bizarre that we're in 2021 and having a conversation about this so far in advance, but we need to because it is our current ninth grade class, I believe, Dr. Foley.
That's correct.
And whether or not the Val Sal would have the opportunity to speak at that particular graduation, Dr. Foley shared with me the Val and Sal get a medal. They would still get a medal of recognition at that time, but as with every class, there is a committee that includes students to talk about the graduation ceremony itself, and the process of selecting speakers, whether it be Val or Sal, would be determined at that particular time to really make a decision as to if the Val and Sal want to speak, if they don't want to speak, if there's a sash, if there's something that goes along with that, but it's typically part of a process that would be part of that graduation festivities for that particular year, and the students are a part of that decision-making process. So we wanted to make sure we had still the recognition of Val and Sal in the process for the class of 2025 and that we weren't going to exclude that, and the key significant part for everyone to understand is that we are moving to a decile system as far as overall ranking for the class, as well as the Latin model, which has three rankings of cumulate, magna cumulate, and summa cumulate. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention tonight and bring it up for discussion before we look to November 23rd and have a final policy reading.
Go ahead, Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. So I have a question, and I may just have a misunderstanding. I understood that taking the Val and Sal out was to promote so that children, or students, excuse me, would choose classes that interest them instead of choosing classes that were going to get them up to that distinction. So then basically what we're doing is we're just eliminating rank except for college admissions and such things after those two positions.
In a sense, Mrs. Hogan, and the point of the overall change, like, I'm looking at this as a process with respect to where we are with the student recognition, and we absolutely want to prioritize kids making decisions on courses based upon what they feel is most appropriate to help guide them for their future, so that's the root of the policy change itself. There's still, you know, a level of concern of the recognition of the two highest because it's always been, you know, historically, a very, what's the right word, an earned, you know, celebration for the hard work that they do. I took the opportunity, I get the opportunity to work with the curriculum coordinators in Berks County, and we put out a survey, and the information that came back was about half, roughly about half of the county schools in Berks County do not have the Val and Sal. About half of the schools have the Val and Sal, and we looked at what kinds of recognitions for those that don't have it, what they do, and also what, you know, if there's a continuation that schools are looking to move away from the Val and Sal. But we want to make sure that kids are making, you know, selections for the right reason, and the other piece of it is that whole needing to speak at graduation was a concern for many districts over the years because it puts a lot of pressure, and we want to make sure that kids just feel comfortable about what they're doing. So those conversations are still going to be ongoing, like I, you know, I shared with Dr. Foley and with you earlier, the class of 2025 is a few years away, you know, depending on where life guides us in those next few years, there's a possibility we may want to tweak this by the time we get to 2025, but that decile system and having a Latin model for recognition is a key component to this because we can recognize so many more students for their accomplishments.
So I just, I have a quick follow-up, I'm sorry. So when we are figuring class rank, I'm assuming we use like a computer program or something that does that for us, nobody's sitting there and doing it by hand, right?
Yeah, and we had shared with you before, how many decimal points?
Usually four or five decimal points.
Four or five decimal points out, so like literally, you know, if everyone on the board was on that high end of the graduating class, you could literally be separated by just, you know, decimal points.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Ms. McWhorter, you got a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So one, in the past, am I correct, Dr. Foley might know this one better, has class rank been put on report cards previously?
There's not necessarily a class rank on report cards for anybody to see other than one individual. They only get to see their own place, and that's it.
Yeah, but you know, kids, they talk. So will class ranks still be on report cards?
It will just be in a decile point at that. What would be published at this point for would be the decile, like you're in the top 10% or the top 20% or the top 30%.
Okay. So theoretically, one wouldn't know the valedictorian and salutatorian until close to the end of their senior year?
Until the last day.
Until, okay. So that would also alleviate some of the stress that these kids feel by continuing to compete.
Correct.
Okay, that was my main question. Thank you.
Any other, oh, Mr. Foose.
I was not first or second in my class, so I don't know what the motivations necessarily are for somebody who is competing for first or second in their class. I would imagine that attaining the, you know, salutatorian, valedictorian is something that is certainly to be treasured, and it's a great achievement. Do people typically pursue that for that distinction, or is it because they'd like to speak at graduation? Are those two kind of mutually exclusive, and are we looking if we're going to maintain those titles? Will, are we still planning to go with the kind of the audition route for graduation?
Yeah, great questions, and we talked about the potential for them to speak at graduation could be an option. We wanted to make the Committee of 2025 be kind of part of that conversation, and the people that are, the people, the students that are typically on that, you know, Dr. Foley, correct me if I'm wrong, like that top tier, like it's a handful of students really, you know, to the point of deciding why they're taking courses and to get, and we'll call it the bump, you know, because some courses they get bumps, more so than maybe taking a course because it might be something that interests them, they are concerned about getting to this level. That's kind of the reason for the change, to kind of give more recognition to more students, but in that particular year, our goal is to have our committee together and have dialogue about, you know, what the Val and Sal maybe have that opportunity to speak on those times if they so choose to be part of that, you know, conversation.
Yeah, I think it's probably too much, just my opinion, it's probably too much in the minutia for the board. I think it's, that's an administrative decision, but my personal opinion would be that giving those two folks the right of first refusal, oftentimes maybe they won't choose, and then there would be some sort of open audition, but I don't, like I said, I don't know if that's something that they strive for, and that's part of the reason that they seek to attain that. So I think maintaining the right of first refusal, the ability to speak at graduation, I think it's great to hear from your classmates who work so hard to achieve so much.
Well, and I think to answer your question, the answer to that is it's been a myriad of scenarios with different kids. It certainly has caused a celebration for many, and they can't wait for that opportunity to have that, you know, that opportunity to speak, and it's caused, you know, level anxiety for others that really might not want to do that, but still want to have the recognition of still having that scenario. So I think it's the best of both worlds, and it's moving in a great direction to help support the recognition of more students.
Pretty much following up on what Mr. Foose is saying, the right of first refusal. Right now, you understand that deep of your, so does Dr. Foley, and so do we. How's that enshrined in a policy to make sure that stays there? Because right now, like, we all understand that the Val and Sal most likely will get first refusal if they like, but I didn't, when I read it, I didn't see how that would be enshrined going forward when the people in this room are here to keep that going. How are you going to cover that?
And it's a great question. Mr. Brophy, currently, that's not in the policy for our current practices, it's just been the practice of what we've done, and that conversation that has taken place for that committee every year, the Val and Sal have the opportunity to speak. So as we move forward over the next three years, getting to the class of 2025, I don't, and you know, Mrs. Torsia, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the procedural piece of that would be something that we would put in a policy, but it's been more of a practice, so I just think it's important to have that dialogue at that particular year when we start in 2024 for the 2025 class, that we continue the dialogue about what that looks like at that time.
Okay, so we are intending on keeping the past practice on that then, at this point. Okay, that's fine, thanks.
We're just, you know, like what we're envisioning is like what Mr. Foose kind of said and what you're alluding to, is a dialogue with the people that would be involved with the top two, and then if the top two want nothing to even do with that piece of it, and they just, they want their medal or sash or whatever that goes along with that and the recognition, that it's completely okay for them to back out of that opportunity. And Dr. Foley, I don't know if there's been a student over the years who has chosen to not speak because of the recognition.
Not in this district, but in prior districts, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, it's just, so we will definitely have that dialogue, and for those of you that are still on the board in 2025 at that particular time, and I certainly didn't say that as a criticism, so don't take it that way, but it is, you know, a few years away, you know, it's definitely, we will highlight that at that particular time.
We would be able to also, Mr. Brophy, take the procedures that we have in place and put them in administrative regulation that can be attached to this policy. So it really would just be a matter of taking whatever processes they have, putting it as an AR, and it would be not something that would be voted on because administrative regulations don't come before the board, but it can be noted that it is a part of the process, and then that is easily tweaked as we move along if we, you know, see that, you know, there's need for change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Stout, Dr. Foley, thank you for continuing that discussion. Mr. Stout, I believe you may still be up.
Okay, just to follow up, we will be putting the policy back on for the second reading with the changes as we discuss this evening on the next board meeting, okay?
Mr. Stout, you are up.
I'm the lucky one tonight, and I'm lucky for many, many ways. I have with me tonight Rochelle Town. For those of you that don't know, there's a lot of incredibly hard work that happened behind the scenes to support the teaching and learning of our students within the district, and when people hear about the Office of Teaching and Learning, you know, sometimes my name's attached to it, sometimes Dr. Overo's name's attached to it, but Rochelle Town is our secondary supervisor, curriculum supervisor. She supervises grades six through 12. Jen Joyce was supposed to be here tonight, and I think they've lost, I think, right? Yeah.
It was high three.
Her daughter is the goalie, a field hockey goalie for Upper Perk, Upper Perk, and they were playing Twin Valley tonight, so this, and her daughter's a senior, so this is their last game, so I, you know, I did the right thing and said, you know what, go to the field hockey game and don't come for the board for the presentation, so she would have been here tonight to present. But again, the ability for us to get the BASD Virtual Academy up and running has been a true collaborative effort, and we couldn't do it without the hard work of those around us. So Ms. Town is here tonight to give a quick overview of our Virtual Academy, because I know there's been a lot of questions that have come up about it, and because we have many of our secondary teachers that have the ability to conduct our Virtual Academy, we couldn't have this whole mirage or collage of teachers come, so we have a couple of video clips for teachers that they're going to show you, you know, some of the hard work that they do to support our students. So with that being said, I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Stout, and good evening. As Mr. Stout said, I am the secondary curriculum supervisor. Previously, I had the pleasure of teaching at the high school, both English and social studies, and I was also the English department leader, and tonight I have the pleasure to just share a little bit about our Virtual Academy in its first year, and so I'm really excited to share this information with you. Last year, as we were looking and in the midst of the pandemic, we really saw this need and the desire for a virtual program in our district, and so we sent surveys, we had conversations, we did research on other virtual programs, and also research within what our teachers were experiencing during the pandemic, and we really saw that there were some key things that a virtual academy, for a virtual academy, that our community wanted and desired. We know that if you look at the components on the board, our Virtual Academy, our teachers, our families wanted something that was flexible. Of course, we want our Virtual Academy to have a high level of rigor, and we also thought it was very important to include our BASD teachers and to really create a connection and a community for our BASD virtual students. So in order to create and develop a flexible program, we have an asynchronous program for our students, so this really means that students are working independently, they're self-paced, they have the opportunity to do the work really anytime, anywhere, and that's the great piece of that flexibility and what our families desired. For high level of rigor, our teachers at the high school at the secondary level are using our BASD curriculum, and they're implementing that within our Virtual Academy, and we're, of course, using our highly qualified BASD teachers, and they had a great deal of experience, you know, with the pandemic and what it looked like to teach virtually, and so they were able to use that experience in addition to training and bring that into this first year of the Virtual Academy. Also for building community and connections, and you'll see this when I get to share the teachers' videos, really how we've given this opportunity to create community, students who are in the Virtual Academy even came here and took pictures, and they have an opportunity to do some virtual field trips, and they have opportunities to do extracurricular activities with in-person students. So we really desire to create that community and that connection. So looking specifically at our elementary, currently, we have 52 students in the elementary Virtual Academy, and those 52 students are instructed and supported by two BASD teachers. Those two teachers, you're going to get to watch a little bit about what they do. They are full-time virtual teachers, so they support our students using the Accelerate program all day long, and they are really presenting these core or supporting these core areas, math, English, science, and social studies. Accelerate is a program that has a standards-aligned curriculum. Students watch videos, read, do research, complete assignments within that program, and then our virtual teachers will support as students are going through the different modules in that program. We also offer physical education and art to our virtual students. We have two BASD teachers, Mrs., this is Jen's expertise, Mr. Hadley and Ms. Wagner facilitate those two courses. So it's part of their schedule, and they facilitate PE and art for our first through our fifth grade students. At the middle school level, we have 52 students as well, and we have 28 of our virtual teachers involved in the Virtual Academy. Those teachers, though, not only are they supporting our virtual program, they're also working and completing in-person classes as well, so they're doing both, unlike our elementary, who is a full virtual position. At our middle school level, they support the virtual students using Google Classroom, they're using BASD virtual curriculum, and they're also teaching the same courses in person and really making those connections between what in-person students are learning and what our virtual students are learning under a different instructional model. You can see that we offer the core courses, and we also have a number of electives and special areas available to our middle school students. At the high school level, we have 170 students. Of those 170 students, we have 45 part-time students, and this really speaks to the opportunities that students have in our district with the Virtual Academy. Those part-time students are able to work virtually and do some of these core courses or courses they select virtually, and then some of them are doing BCTC, some of them are coming in person, some of them are even doing college credits. Again, our senior high teachers, there's 35 that are involved, they use the curriculum, they are supporting the Virtual Academy, but also have in-person classes as well, very much like the middle school. You can see, and I'm really proud, that we offer all of our core classes, both at the academic and honors levels, and you can see we offer a number of AP classes and electives for our virtual students. So what I'm really excited about tonight is this part. You get to see the videos of the great things that our virtual teachers are doing, and I wish you could hear from more, but we do have a teacher from every level, and just they'll give you a little insight into their daily practices and some of those pieces.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Koots, and I've been in the district as a teacher for 16 years. I've spent most of my time at New Hanover Elementary School, teaching kindergarten and second grade, and now I'm teaching first, second, and third grade with the Virtual Academy. One thing I do immediately was that these kids still needed to feel that community within the classroom, that family feel, and they also needed to continue feeling part of their school. So there are even a couple of things that I've done to try to build that within the program for them. One way is that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I hold synchronous sessions where the students are invited to come in, and they get to see their classmates there, we share ideas, we talk about the assignments that they've been doing. If I see something that's coming ahead that looks like it might be a little challenging for them, I try to give them, you know, a little heads up, and we work things out together. It's a great time when they get to exchange ideas with each other, talk to each other, and possibly build some friendships. Another way that I've tried to include that is Fun Fridays, and we get together on Zoom on Fun Fridays, and we do really cool things like STEM activities. In fact, Mr. Stout has come and built his own apple and toothpick tower along with the kids, and they really enjoy seeing other adults from their schools. For instance, Mrs. Hester has come to a Fun Friday Zoom time and taught the kids how to do music on their computers. We have guidance counselor, Mrs. Johnson come, and just when you see their eyes, when they recognize, oh, she's from my school, it's a great feeling, and I know it helps them to stay connected. Another way that I just try to make them feel special is I send home snail mail with little cards of encouragement, and what kid doesn't like to get a card in the mail? So these are just a couple of ways that I'm very aware that these guys need to still feel that community and trying to build it in for them. Thanks for letting me talk to you tonight.
My name is Colleen Krills, and I'm the Boyer Town Area School District Virtual Academy teacher for fourth and fifth grade. This evening, I'd like to talk to you about what makes our BASD Virtual Academy unique. I'll talk about our local classroom connections, live opportunities, as well as social and collaborative student activities. For our local classroom connections, we meet each Monday morning for a class meeting. This is where we get to see each other, talk about our weekends, build classroom community. We also take the time to go over announcements, special events for the week, about our academy, as well as happenings in the Boyer Town Area School District. We also take the time to discuss schoolwork and helpful pacing strategies. Next, we're providing live opportunities to our students for synchronous interactions. There are daily Zoom office hours for live help. We have weekly group live sessions to support learning and reinforce concepts, and there is ongoing communication with parents throughout the week. And probably one of the most fun things for our students are the social and collaborative student activities. Each week, we hold a Fun Friday in fourth and fifth grade, and during these events, we do different activities, and we have the opportunity to connect with special guests, we call them, from the Boyer Town Area School District, such as our technology coaches, our administrators, our SEL administrators, and other people from our community who are willing to come in and meet with our students. who are willing to come in and meet with our students. Something else we've incorporated are virtual field trips. So far, we've been able to connect with National Geographic Explorer. And most recently, we've taken a virtual field trip to Hudson Yards Edge, New Edge Building in New York City. With these field trips, we are also able to connect with students around the world and learn together. In addition, we have flip group topics where students record themselves on video and share more about themselves. Great things are really happening here in the Boyertown School District with our virtual academy, and I look forward to continued collaboration.
Hello, it's War Members. My name is John Heasel. I teach in the sixth grade E.L.A. over at Middle School West. And I also teach sixth grade E.L.A. in the virtual academy. Today, I wanted to show you my Google Classroom for the virtual academy to show you what those students' working things are going to look like. So as you can see here, I have each of the assignments posted under a week's worth of a topic. So for example, what you see on your screen here, under the Classwork tab is this topic of Week 118, and then it just throws up exactly what those assignments are going to do. So you can see that I have an assignment here that's called Week 12 Slides. Now, this is a resource for the students because I post one of these each week with a Google slideshow talking about all of the assignments that we do for that week, as well as embedded videos that would walk them through how to complete these assignments. So it's been a really interactive process for the students to be able to watch these videos and have that on demand, which has been a nice feature. The other way in which then I am also able to interact with the students is through this office hours as you notice up at the top here. Every Wednesday from two thirty-five to three fifteen, I have a Google Meet call that the students can join and ask me any questions if they have any face-to-face interaction. They can also obviously email me as well and I can solve some of their problems that way. But if they have a larger scale issue with something, they're not totally sure and just want a little bit of that face-to-face interaction instruction, that's a great way to do it for that group. Thanks. So keeping that in mind, I have been posting assignments at a two-week ahead of time so that the students are able to work ahead if they know that they're going to have something that is upcoming or they're not sure about, so that they are able to check in with that, as well as making sure that all of their assignments have been completed. So hope this gives you a little bit of insight into what the virtual academy looks like. Take care.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nick Idle. I teach BBA astronomy at the high school. And this is my thirteenth year teaching in the Boyertown School District. In terms of my teaching experience with the BBA program, I have found that it has really improved my willingness to use digital tools in my classroom. So pretty much every time I create a lesson, not just for my BBA program, but also for my physical program, I'm thinking about how can I use the digital tools that we have to have students complete the lessons? I think in general, as a staff, this program is really going to be pushing us into the twenty-first century, not just in our teaching styles, but also where our students and their learning styles. From a student's perspective, what we've noticed is that students are being really successful. We've noticed that they're growing with the program and that they're showing achievement. You have to understand that these students are getting the same rigor as and the same curriculum as the students that are in the physical classroom. And a lot of them are being extremely successful. The other thing I noticed is all the connections that they have with the Boyertown School District in fashion general. So that means that they have the same opportunities for tutoring. They have the same opportunities to contact us for office hours to get help. And the majority will really contact us through just basic email. And they know that when they contact us and they get a reply from us, it's a reply from us and it is our material. It's not a material that somebody else made up for us. So they know that that sort of reply from us is one that is really directed in the correct way because we made the material up. The other way I see the student experience in this program is that the students really have a connection with the Boyertown School District. So for example, in October, when we did senior presentations, I actually had two of my BBA students in my senior presentations. So not only are they in the BBA program, but they are part of the Boyertown and they take part in all the Boyertown programs as well. So in general, I think the experience has been really good so far and the program is growing every day.
So there you have it, our teachers. And it's just really thankful for their experience and their expertise as we are, you know, working through and growing the program in this first year. So, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. One, a student needs help. Now, I did hear the one that's they're available from two thirty to three fifteen on a Wednesday. What happens if it's a Friday?
So teachers have those regularly scheduled hours for office hours, just so there's something consistent. But just as our in-person students, if a student's seeking help, our teachers will, you know, work with schedules and make sure they're meeting those students' needs. So there may not be a consistent, you know, timeframe for that student, but they'll be working, they'll be working to make sure they're accommodating the needs of the students.
Mrs. Nyman, too, on that point, something that's really important. If we feel that they're not making enough progress in the virtual platform, we offer the opportunity to come back to brick and mortar to get face-to-face support if needed, depending on the circumstances.
Okay. Also, the teachers, the elementary teachers, because it's my understanding that the sixth grade and and that are also doing other, sixth through twelve is also doing other classes. But the elementary teachers, where are they located at? Can they be at home or are they in school or?
Yeah, it's a combination of both. Mrs. Nyman, our elementary teachers have the flexibility to work from home, but they're required to be in the building on uncertain days. And really, the platform that they teach from, because they teach across grade levels, it would be way too much of a daunting task for them to create the curriculum in in multiple grade levels. That's why the elementary school has a platform. So they teach from that platform because they're across grade levels. So they do provide that opportunity in the building as well to have those consultations with students if they need to. I mean, it's just, we just had pictures recently. So we had to plan Picture Day for the virtual kids to come into the buildings. Some of those things, those procedural things that you don't necessarily think about, we wanted to make sure we had the ability to support our virtual students as well.
Okay, I guess my concern was to make sure that they had, they were available to access the kids, students during the day also. Not that they're left out there on their own.
No, absolutely. And as you can imagine with, you know, your young grandchildren, for a first or second grader to be left on their own in a virtual environment probably would not be the most successful scenario. So they work very closely with the families, the parents of those students, to make sure that, we kind of call it virtual coaching, where they help to support their students as well. Or I shouldn't say their students, they're children with the teacher.
The Accelerate program actually provides a number of resources for what they call the learning coaches. And oftentimes, that's the parent who's at home supporting the kiddo. So we have those resources, you know, from the teachers, our own BASD virtual teachers. But the program also offers ways to support the students as well.
Yeah. Mrs. Torsha and I participated in a virtual field trip with a BAT Academy in Israel. And there was an actual instructor who talked about the echolocation that bats use and how they recreated echolocation with robots. It was crazy and I couldn't believe I'm on. And I'm bringing this up because if this is mom here, you know, you see the parents in the screen, too, equally as excited about the learning opportunity that the students had. So it opened my eyes to like, oh, my gosh, like, not only are we having a virtual academy here within Boyertown Area School District, but we're utilizing, I believe it's National Geographic, that was connected to the virtual field trip that they took. And the parents were right there with their kids, excited about, you know, learning about what bats do.
Okay, I have one more question. And I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Foley will have to answer. The kids going in and out of school for, just say they have a math class, but they're doing the rest at home, how is that working?
Yeah, it works fine. We have a process where they sign in and out of the school in the mornings when they're coming in for their.
I mean, I've been there, I've seen.
It's busy.
Yeah, it's a nightmare in there.
But it's still a process that we do and yes, that works very well. Yeah, they're very successful in that based upon their needs.
And the same thing, Mrs. Nyman, with BCTC participation. I think Mrs. Towne had a slide on that. It's the same scenario. They're at BCTC for half their day and they could be in the virtual academy for the other half. So there's a little bit of, you know, there's a lot of everything going on, so.
Yeah, I had a question about, you said if if the students are starting to fall behind, you'll bring them in?
Yes, Mr. Updegrub. So when we get to the elementary and the middle schools are still on trimesters and the high school is on quarters or semesters, so the timing of the reporting mechanism is a little bit different. What we did was to go a little deeper into your question. We didn't want to leave an open door for all students to be able to kind of hop in and hop out of our virtual platform. So we use those trimester and semester timelines. But I say that because we've given opportunities for kids to be successful in the virtual environment, provided supports, offered to come back for particular subjects. And if they're not successful with that, because Boyertown kind of owns the program, we say no more virtual and you need to come back into face-to-face because you're not able to be successful in that. And we give plenty of opportunities for students to potentially, you know, show that they can be successful to try to stay there. But we ultimately know if they're not successful with that, we need to bring them back.
Yes, I have several questions. So some of these are just curiosity questions. So if your music and phys ed and art, how do materials get home?
So at the beginning of the year, there was opportunities for our students to come into in-person, especially at the high school, the first day of school. Our virtual students came in and went through a lot of the same elements that all high school students do. And part of that day, they picked up materials. At the middle school, same process, a little bit, it was two weeks later and had an opportunity to just pick up materials at their respective schools. Elementary, those supplies go through Mrs. Joyce and and she coordinates that. Often, they come to the ed center and pick up supplies that they might need.
And they tried, at the elementary school level, they tried to make it everyday household items for some of the scenarios. They referenced the little tower. It was toothpicks and apples. So they built this, you know, these different dimensions and shapes and did that on their Fun Friday. So they try to make sure that it's resources that they have in their homes. And if they don't have access to those resources, they provide them.
All right. So my next question was about the whole part-time thing. You have forty-five kids. And I guess I'm trying to figure out the advantages. I mean, if these kids go off to BCTC, it just kind of makes sense then to go back to the high school for their classes. But, you know, part of these kids are heading back home to do their classes. Can you guys, can Dr. Foley or whoever just maybe expand on that a little bit?
Well, depending upon every student situation, it's different. So some students may have, as Mrs. Towne has shared with us, some students will not come to us, but may be taking classes at Monco or other colleges and universities, which makes them part-time for us. Or they may have some other medical conditions that say, hey, you can be here for this part of the time, but the other part of the time, you're going to be here. So it's just a very combination of different scenarios that make that happen. And there are about forty-five students that are involved in that process right now, depending upon their needs.
To Mr. Updegrub's question before, if there's a particular subject that we really feel like the face-to-face scenario is what best meets their needs, that might be one period that they would come in for.
The other thing that I'd like to add is that we wanted to make it appealing to students to, ultimately, we want them in school. We want them in front of us. But we felt that a hybrid model was a way of getting them in the doors for part of the day and giving them the flexibility. So we do have students who are athletes and they excel in an area and their training might be in the middle of the afternoon, which doesn't make it conducive for them to be able to be in school. So in order to stay with the rigors that we do offer at the high school, it gives them that flexibility to be there for part of the day and then be responsible for their classes and coursework for the, you know, the other parts of the day. But it's definitely something that we are, you know, promoting because we want kids really in person.
And then, so let's see, the next thing I have is just a comment. I really liked the videos and the teachers explaining that that was great, talking about their Fun Fridays and their social and collaborative activities. And then my last question, oh, and I also liked how Mr. Idle mentioned that it improved his teaching by incorporating the digital aspect with his regular.
Yeah, just to add, not to cut you off at that point, but what we required all of our teachers to work on this particular year from day one is a blended model of instruction. Because we knew as kids potentially need to quarantine or whatever that process would be to keep them connected to the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So to his point, I very much appreciated him saying that because it really has improved. And all of our teachers are working on some sort of combination so that, you know, they have the ability to kind of pivot if there's a situation that happens in a particular classroom or with some particular students.
And then my last question, and you talked about this a little bit, but what benchmarks are you considering or what benchmarks will make this program a success? What are your measuring points?
Well, I think for this, we certainly want to see that our students are successful. You know, so we're looking at, every week I pull progress reports and really kind of assess where students are, the whole picture of that. So I think that's our number one benchmark. We want to see student success in the program. Do you have anything to add?
No, I was going to say, I mean, that's what it really is, that the kids that are in the program are successful and they maintain in the program. And those that aren't provide the levels of support that are needed. And if those levels of support aren't strong enough to keep them in the virtual platform, to pivot what their model looks like and bring them back and have that conversation. So we've had some tough decisions with some students because they haven't been successful. But for the most part, I think it's two hundred and, oh, my gosh, two thirty, two fifty? I forget what our total number is. It's the majority of them have been successful and have stayed in the program. And, you know, it's hard to think that, you know, from Thursday, it's two weeks till Thanksgiving, we're almost done with the first trimester of the school year. The first quarter ended a week and a half ago and the first trimester is done in about a week. So we're moving forward.
Okay, so you're doing, you're just looking at weekly reports. I didn't know if you had like a year-end benchmark or if for some of the grades you have PSA. I didn't know if you had more long-term benchmarks that you were looking at.
So all of our students will, at the high school, will still participate in midterm and final exams. So those are some of the benchmarks. All of our virtual students are still doing CDT's, IXL diagnostic pieces. So a lot, the same pieces that are happening in person are also happening with our virtual students because of just that connected to the district and that, just making sure we have that level of connectedness with the two groups, so.
And they still have to take the state-required assessments like Keystone's and PSSAs, which is kind of a new foundational year. Last year was a very odd year because of all the circumstances. And this year, we're moving forward and it's going to be back to some of the normal scenarios.
Excellent. Thank you guys so much.
Mrs. Nyman?
Yeah, just thinking now, since this is our virtual and class rank, are they put into our class rank as a Boyertown student then?
Yeah, and I, yeah, they absolutely do because they're taking the same coursework. And just remember, class rank only starts at the high school. It's not below that. So they're taking the same courses with the same, the same weight, all of the kinds of same scenarios that all the students have.
And I failed to mention, but they'll earn the same BASD diploma as well at the end.
And that, you know what, it's a great question, Mrs. Nyman, because when we used Berks Online Learning before, that was a little bit different because the courses were weighted differently because it was a, it was a curriculum that was provided through a resource called Engenuity. It wasn't through a regular BASD curriculum. So we're proud of the fact that we're creating the curriculum for our students that the brick-and-mortar kids receive, as well as our virtual students.
Go ahead, Brendan.
Thank you very much for the presentation. That was really helpful. I liked hearing as well about the hybrid enrollment. And I think that that provides a lot of great flexibility for students who want to attend the BCTC or who might be doing dual enrollment. It sounded like we have a couple of those. And then also, as was spoken about, not just with a student who might be like excelling in athletic pursuit, but just, just given the changes that we've seen with work from home and and kind of the push-pull of whether or not people are going to return to the office. I think we've really, we've all kind of lived through this kind of shift that will still be settled over years to come. And people are looking for more flexibility, especially parents, working parents, looking for more flexibility. And we're naturally competing with these virtual hybrids who just had their moment in the past two years. who just had their moment in the past two years. So we need to retain retain students and continue to to provide them the opportunities that that Boyertown can provide. So I think this has been a great endeavor. I'm curious what our plan is for recruitment to continue to draw students into our program, what kind of capacity we have for that, as well as the teachers and staff that might support that.
Yeah, another great question. We're taking each year as it as it comes, you know, depending on what the the situation with the pandemic or endemic, you know, presents over the next year or so. We just want to make sure that we have a rigorous platform for students that can participate virtually to compete against those outside servers, because we do know, as you know, Mrs. D'Nikola has spoken many times, the cost that is incurred by outside, I should, the lack of funds that come to us because of losing students outside. Our hope is as that we move forward, that it's a a platform that provides the reputation that kids can be successful with this and also have all the rigors and celebrations that are part of a BASD program, which it seems this year, as we've, again, first trimester's almost over, it seems like we're at a really good spot to really continue to move forward. To Mrs. Torscha's point, the recruitment of trying to get more kids in our virtual program is not necessarily the the goal. The goal is to pull kids back that want to participate virtually. We would love for all of our students to be face to face, but we do know that in the modern world, that's not always the case, and we have to adapt the best that we can. So it's kind of a combination of all of that. So as we move forward, planning for next year, we'll put platforms in place to help support.
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess the the teachers that are currently involved in the program, do they, will they likely continue their involvement, or will there be a a different slate of of teachers supporting that in next year or future years?
Yeah, to be determined.
Thanks for talking about the the state exams. I had that question as well. I'm curious how your apple toothpick tower turns out, but we we can talk about that later. The I was curious about the tutoring. I I know it was mentioned about tutoring and office hours. I I believe that the National Honor Society has a tutoring schedule. They support tutoring at the high school level. Is that something that's available to students in the virtual academy?
Any tutoring that we have is virtual to to all students, virtual or not. Now, in particular, that he was talking about in the video, we actually have tutoring periods every period based upon content, so a student can log on and talk with teachers that are maybe not necessarily their teacher, but can help them with that content area. But the NHS and some of the other students are, we're actually getting ready to fire that up again for some studies coming up for our our state testing as well.
Great, yeah. I thought a lot of our, a lot of our students are very tech savvy, and some of those NHS students, if they're already have that tutoring program going, they could extend that to the virtual student, virtual academy. The last question I had was, well, I'd ask about the NHS tutoring. I guess, can you give a little bit more detail about how that is done at the lower levels? Is it strictly office hours and the allotted time, or are there, and I know that there was a, you talked about the the support model, it's typically parents that are the liaison, the academic liaisons, or that, have you found that there are other other people that fulfill that role, or are there any any groups that that perform, that, I know that early in the pandemic, there were parents doing pods. Are you seeing any of that occurring with the virtual academy?
Not not that I'm aware of. The at the at the levels, we try to build in as much support that is built into the program, but really, the the next level of support is often bringing them back into the brick and mortar kind of environment for whatever that need might be.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Foose, I just wanted to follow up and say that the point of the the Boyertown Virtual Academy was to put out a similar program that is run by, you know, other academies, you know, Century Twenty One, other cyber schools. It wasn't to make for synchronous instruction, but to be asynchronous, which is what people are leaving our school district or our schools for. So many times, you know, we do get feedback from parents that, you know, would have liked to have seen the same synchronous instruction that we had last year, and that's not what we were trying to to go for. We are trying to bring more students to return and to be competitive with those same programs that they were leaving us for, because many people wanted the flexibility and not have that synchronous. So I just wanted to, you know, share that, you know, that is a disclaimer that we have heard repeatedly, and we understand that that's what would be ideal. However, that would be a whole different model of instruction, and it would actually be like a third type of of way that we're delivering instruction, and again, back to wanting to bring people here and and or keeping them in our buildings.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on what Mrs. Torscha said, we promoted it with an asynchronous model from day one. If you go back and look at our videos, we did town halls to have a Q and A for our parents that are interested, and I think, you know, as many times as we can count, we said asynchronous is going to be what it looked like. So the feedback that we got, I think, was a misinterpretation of what some parents might have thought, and, you know, we go back to what the root of our program was or is.
Yeah, I think my, when I talked about the the podding, it was more, it was more around, because understanding that it is asynchronous, that it might be beneficial for some of those parents to use each other as resources, and and maybe where where the kids could sync up, they could, they could try to work in tandem with one another, but I didn't know if that was something that was that you found was happening or not.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. So I just, I just want a quick clarification. So because this is a district school and not a charter school, this academy is only open to district students, correct? Yeah, so we couldn't pull from other places like charters do. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say thanks for taking this time, board, to to listen to this. It's, I was excited to see some familiar faces. I had two kids go through the district, and I have a seventh grader now, and to see the caliber of teacher that, you know, these guys have been through the hallway a couple times, just to know that they would want to participate in this project, gives me a high degree of confidence that, you know, this is going to be successful, it's going to continue to be successful. And again, just thank you very much for, you know, taking the time to explain this to us. So thank you both.
And to the point of flexibility, Mrs. Town has over an hour commute and has two little kiddos at home, so I want to thank her for being here today and feel completely appropriate for allowing her to to vacate, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. Torscha, I believe that brings us to superintendent's consent agenda.
I am looking for the board of school directors to approve the consent agendas presented. Tonight, we are looking for approval for the addendum to settlement agreement student for student number one zero one seven one one, the collaborative procurement of food, bid awards for spring sports, and the treasurer's report from May twenty twenty one and June twenty twenty one. So again, asking for the board of school directors to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Deroff, move.
Ms. Deroff, Ms. McWherter, consent will go to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
And next, I would ask that the board of school directors approves the personnel agenda item as presented.
Deroff, second. Any questions or comments? Off to a vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
That completes my report, Mr. Hemingway.
I'd like to just check in with our committee liaisons. BCIU? Mrs. Dennen is absent. Mr. Updegrove? BCTC?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, and we talked about various things. Transportation was a big issue, because they have the same problem we're having, and I have to acknowledge, there were three students, Jessica Atkins and Luke Maholland and Eon Towers for their culinary achievements in their first, second levels. That was about it for the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Foose?
Yes, so we previously had the presentation on a portrait of a graduate and the instructional model, and that information is is on the district website. Tonight, we had the virtual academy presentations, which were were excellent, and at our next meeting, we will have the the high school and middle school program of study presented for a vote. And then also, just as a general reminder for a lot of our students and parents, that the winter Keystone exams are coming up in less than a month.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Deroff, facilities. Ms. Deroff, can you push your red button?
I received the appraisal for the Pine Forge Elementary School, and I'm reviewing it right now and should be able to give a report at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you. I believe next would be finance. Mr. Brophy?
Okay, and for me for policy. We already discussed the the policy previously, and that would be up to vote on second reading at our next at our next meeting. Next one will bring us to board comments. What we'll do is we'll just work our way around the room again, so we'll, Mel, unless you want me to switch it up?
No, actually, I took enough time asking questions, and I'm just gonna do no comments today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Updegrove? Ms. Hogan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. I just wanted to commend the district for holding the first COVID vaccination clinic for the five, the over five year olds this Sunday, and I wanted to just comment that I did notice that in the first nine days of November, we have thirty seven reported COVID cases in the district, which for all of October, we had sixty five. So they are a little high for these first nine days. It looks like, and if I count it correctly, it looks like eighteen of those are in elementary. So I just wanted to remind parents, you know, that they can get out there and and get those vaccines. Lots of places are giving them, they're really becoming available, and that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman? Mr. Foose?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on that as well. I appreciate the district working again with the Medicine Shop at Boyertown. I think that that's a great service that they provided for anybody who would like to pursue that option, certainly reach out to any of the local pharmacies, including the Medicine Shop. I called them earlier and was able to get my my youngest son in for an appointment at the Medicine Shop, because we missed our opportunity over the weekend. But I think that we, in in my opinion, we're nearing the the, we're returning a corner, we're nearing the end, because all of these things are available for people to to make these choices on on the vaccines, and and I hope that twenty twenty two brings a lot less of COVID related issues for our district. And the last thing I wanted to say, and this is really related to the committee, was that although I gave my update, that will be the last update that I give, so I just want to thank Mr. Stout for all the all the work that he's done on behalf of students and 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 learning here in the district, and I really appreciate it working alongside him with that committee.
Mr. Brophy? Ms. Deroff? I I'd just like to take a moment, I guess it was last week, I attended the New Hanover Township Board of Supervisors meeting. And as as you all know, we've been dealing with some traffic issues, some safety issues at 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 Boyertown East, and I wanted to to give them a, they did talk extensively at their meeting about some solutions and a partnership, and their willingness to, you know, to help us out in any way they can. I did want to wait to the end of the meeting, but those guys, I gave them about two hours into that meeting, and I I was ready to bolt. So I just wanted to to use this meeting and this opportunity to acknowledge a a great thank you to them for for continuing this partnership with the district, and, you know, we have a lot of work to do, still some solutions to come up with, but we're off off to a great start, and I just wanted to officially say thank you to the New Hanover Board of Supervisors. With that being said, that leads us to announcements.
We have a few. I just want to remind everybody that our next board of school directors meeting, voting meeting, will be November twenty third. Then we will have the school board reorganization meeting and committee of the whole meeting scheduled for December seventh here at the Education Center, and December fourteenth will be a board of school directors voting meeting, and that will be the rest of the board meetings for this calendar year. And I also wanted to bring to everyone's attention just a few things that were coming up. If you haven't seen it, Boyertown Middle School East is going to be presenting Schoolhouse Rock. That's November nineteenth and the twentieth. There is information that went out today in Let's Talk Tuesday with reminders with regard to time and cost of tickets. And I do have an upcoming holiday concert schedule, so there's lots of concerts that that are going to be happening. Some of the questions that I had received, you know, with regards to elementary level band and or choral concerts, I certainly have approved, and I am promoting all of these activities, because our kids have had a long enough time away from participating at the elementary level. Some of the music teachers might not think that their kids are ready for a performance prior to the holidays, so stay tuned, there may be something afterwards. I do see here that the, there is an elementary band and orchestra concert that's going to be at Bash, but I do have in the weekly newsletter, all of the upcoming holiday concerts that are scheduled. So there are quite a few, along with a musical at Middle School East, well, which we announced. And so just for you to note that there's a lot of things that'll be happening coming, you know, forward to the holidays. And that is all that I have right now, Mr. Hemingway.
Okay, I'd just like to thank everybody for their commitment. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Nyman, seconded by Mr. Foose, meaning adjourn.